Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I don't want to start screaming already. So, we'll just go right into the agenda portion of the meeting. First, we have the ordinance on second reading. Orbits to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the City of New Brunswick, Chapter 10, Vehicles and Truck Traffic, Schedule 29, Time Limited Parking. Uh, do we have ordinance on first reading?
No.
We do not have any ordinance on first reading. We'll go right to the, uh, resolutions. Uh, approved agenda amendments, approved payroll, authorized refund for gene tax sale certificates, set hearing date for distance waiver requests for Tapmaster LLC, a New Jersey limited liability company, trading as a group of beer, trading as a counter. September 18th, 2013, 6:30 again, liquor license, 1214-33049009. Number 305, approved person-to-person transfer of liquor license from condo on George LLC to Tapmaster LLC, a New Jersey limited liability corporation, trading as a group of beer, trading as a counter. I gave you the liquor license before. 306, approved on-premise raffle, 50/50 at St. Peters University Hospital for AORAN, AOR, is that right? Of Middlesex County, Chapter 3107, November 13th, 2013. Number 307, approval amendment of Resolution R.041307, reason to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $357 with Benedict Altman Boswell First Feaster from 17/8/7550 to 18/2/3250. Number 308, approved request for use of city property, location is Buglo Park Concert Lawn, requested by Phi Kappa Alpha Fraternity for lawn games between sororities for Rutgers University to benefit the Jane DeHern Memorial Foundation, October 6th, 2013, time 1:00 to 6:00 PM. 309, approved request for use of city property, requested by Minus Imperial International El Shada, I believe, location Feaster Park sidewalks, Bayard Street, French Street, Handy Street, Joyce Kilmer Avenue, Sanford Street, Remsen Avenue, Hale Street to Feaster Park for Miracle Crusade Religious Event with live music and preaching, date Saturday, September 14th, 2013, rain date, Saturday, September 21st, 2013. Sidewalk time is 1:00 to 3:00 PM, park time is 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Approved request for street closing, requested by New Brunswick Police Department, the New Brunswick Domestic Violence Awareness Coalition, location beginning on Pratt, 9 Jersey Avenue, traveling on Sanford Street, Route 27, Florence Street, Somerset Street, Lewis Street, Sedan Street, Joyce Kilmer Avenue, Handy Street, French Street, Route 27, around Park on French and Handy, New Jersey Avenue, ending to Pratt. For annual domestic violence awareness rally, March in the City of New Brunswick, date Saturday, October 19th, 2013, time 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. 311, approved request for use of city sidewalk, requested by Three Angels Ministry, Linden Molten, location Bourbon Court and Sample Road or Bourbon Court and Zebra Way, for preaching to pastors by youth utilizing their full harm, dates Saturday, September 14th, 21st and 28th, October 5th, 12th, 19th to 26th, time is 4:00 PM to 5:30 PM. 312, approved amendment of Resolution R.041358, reason change one account number for the certification of funds with all colors, green, health printing, LLC. 4, furnace delivered T-shirts not to exceed $35,458.97, term is 24 months starting April 18th, 2013, ending April 17th, 2015. Approval of this change order will not constitute any increase to 20% or more of the original 313, approved amendment of Resolution R.021356, reason to extend parking in Buglo Park for additional six months, requested by St. Peters University Hospital for additional six months of parking, dates September 1st, 2013, March 4th, March 1st, 2014, not pro ton. 314, authorized purchase by police department under state contract A.77560 from Shee International Corporation for computer-aided dispatch records management and mobile reporting not to exceed 315, approved amendment of Resolution R.081223, reason award extension of contract with Puerto Rican Action Board for fair housing counseling services, term July 1st through July 2013 through June 30th, 2014, not to exceed $15,000, non pro ton also. 316, approved person-to-person and place-to-place transfer of liquor license from BGYMS Incorporated, trading as the nightclub, to HKCP Corporation, trading as UE's nightclub, liquor license number 1214-33073002.
Excuse me for a second. Um, this item will be pulled, it's not ready for transfer.
Okay. 318, I'm sorry, 317, approved request for solicitation of funds, requested by Rutgers University Habitat for Humanity Campus Chapter for Habitat for Humanity, dates September 6th, 11th, 17th, 19th, 2013, time 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM, location Corner of Walden and George Streets. 318, approved agreement with Middlesex County proven authority, yard waste recycling and marking services, two years, August 1st, 2013, July 31st, 2015. 319, approved amendment of Resolution R.111263, change order number one with Top Line Construction Corporation for installation of asphalt, curbing, edge brick and Rutgers Village, amount minus about $19.50 credit not to exceed $90,735.00. Approval of this change order will not constitute any increase to 20% or more of the original contract. 320, approved amendment of Resolution R.081366, change order number four and change order number five with TechCon Development Corporation for Rookwood Avenue Fire Museum and Community Center, amount $9,067.55 and $20,986.35. Approval of this change order will not constitute any increase to 20% or more of the amount of the original contract. 321, approved request for street closing, requested by James Neal, location Joyce Kilmer Avenue from Walden Street to Sanford Street for celebration of the 50th anniversary of Martin Luther King's March on Washington and the annulation of the Martin Luther King Memorial Day, Saturday, October 31st, 2013, time 10:40 AM to 11:45 AM, non pro ton. What else? I'm sorry, what was my bad? 322, approved award of contract with traffic lines for 2013 traffic line striping not to exceed $65,753.85. 323, approved relaxation of the city police unit, requested by Tishney Construction Corporation in New Jersey, Saturday, work at 135 Somerset Street, date Saturday, September 1st, September 7th, 2013 through December 28th, 2013, time 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. 324, approved amendment of Resolution R.011349, reason additional $3,000 with Bridge Order Veterinary Hospital, veterinary services for the police department from $5,000 to $8,000. 325, approved amendment of 2013-2014 CBDG One Year Consolidated Action Plan, reason to act, to allocate funds to existing pedestrian improvement project, amount $65,244. 326, authorized payment for emergency procurement, Engineering Department, for installation of new sewer line at 68 Princeton Avenue with Natri Contractors Corporation, not to exceed $21,836, purchase order P.65467. 327, authorized refund for lost farmland home mortgage for payments made in error against block 702.01, block 16, for parking in the road in the amount of $2,017.85 against 213 taxes. That's it?
Yes, I'm sure you can initially, there was a discussion item, but it's since been withdrawn and has been handled administratively. Uh, this weekend, there'll be some artwork directed in Floyd Park in conjunction with some, uh, sounds, uh, program, um, with the concert down on the 7th and the 8th, I believe. So, uh, it was on your initial, uh, agenda, but it's not necessary for any action of your part.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the meeting will come to order.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Council Vice President Egan.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Garladi.
Present.
And Council President Esteban Jackson.
Thank you. Please see advisement, the notice requirements of the open public meeting act have been complied with and satisfied, and that the annual notice, which gave sufficient notice at the time and place, conduct the whole public meetings of the municipal council of the City of New Brunswick, has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on the appropriate bulletin board in the lobby of the city hall in Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the City of New Brunswick, namely the home news tribune. Please stand up, please. Page your leashes.
To comply, the United States of America, in the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, we always do a moment of silence, I'm gonna change it around just a little bit tonight, a moment of silence for all our men and women serving our armed forces overseas, and anybody who's lost a life in anti-conflict overseas, we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, right now, I'll pick a mo- a motion to approve the minutes, the board of the special meetings.
Motion.
Second.
There are no minutes for action.
Oh, okay.
Move right on to the ordinance on the second reading.
Okay, we have ordinance on second reading. Read 02, ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the City of New Brunswick, Chapter 10, Vehicles and Traffic Schedule 29, Time Limited Parking. Does anybody from the public have any comments on this ordinance? Seeing none?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yeah.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
We have resolutions, number 301, we are holding number 316 all the way to 327. Does anybody from the public have any comment on any of the resolutions here this evening? Step right up there, Mr. Pratt.
Good evening, members of the council, public, uh, my name is Charles Pratt of New Brunswick, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions, uh, particularly about the liquor licenses, it's, uh, number four and five, seem to deal with the same liquor license, uh, what business is that, and, uh, you know, what's changing here?
Well, Mr. Shane, yes. That's fine, um, the item agenda is four or 304, is actually a resolution setting down a hearing date for our next meeting, September 18th, on a, uh, on a waiver, distance waiver, under the ordinance with respect to the ability of a new license to go into that particular location. That location that we speak of is the old Soho location, which is right down in the corner here. That establishment, um, is, I suspect, planned to reopen, but they're reopening with a new liquor license that has to be transferred to that location. The second, uh, resolution, 305, is actually the transfer of that license person-to-person, not place-to-place, just person-to-person, to the individual or the entity, I should say, that ultimately, uh, will hold that license and operate that license at that location.
Thank you very much, and so the seller is who?
Um, the transfer her of the license, um, is, I want to misstate, here we go, I'll just tell you.
Condo on George.
Yeah, it is, it's condo on George, which I understand is an LLC.
So, would that be a, uh, restaurant or a bar that people might know in town already?
Um, no, I believe not, I believe that was an entity created to hold the, to hold that license, I don't know exactly the history on this particular license, um, but I understand, from reading the application, that it's going to be some type of, uh, establishment that serves beer and food, that's about all I know.
I'm just, I'm just curious, whose license it was originally, but, uh, can, can somebody tell me how much the sale was for?
I don't, I don't have that information off the top of my head, um, usually that's disclosed when they do the, um, investigation by the police department and then clerk, we probably get to that information, um, through the clerk's office. Mark, you'd like.
I do have the, yeah.
You have this here?
$150,000.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the, uh, two other questions I have are regarding, uh, number 25 and number 26. What are the pedestrian improvements in 25, and, uh, what were the emergency in 26?
I'll speak to 26, I think Glenn Patterson needs to speak to 25. Uh, it came to our attention that a sewer line at 68 Princeton Avenue was damaged, uh, when we were, uh, trying to complete the, uh, Rookwood Avenue storm sewer improvements, uh, and as such, we're authorizing an emergency contract with Navy, uh, contractors to rebuild the sewer line for the property owner. We are asking the contractor, um, car bro, uh, to assume the eventual cost of that, and we'll take it out of our final payment, our final payment.
Thank you, and, uh, number 25.
So, these are additional funds that we're able to procure from HUD, uh, given after different jurisdictions in the, uh, New York, New Jersey region, looking to put them towards pedestrian improvements, uh, this is the pot of funds we've used for the flashing crosswalks in a number of neighborhoods throughout towns, we're hoping to be able to do, uh, do more of that, we haven't identified the specific intersections for that yet, but, uh, generally they will be in residential neighborhoods.
So, it would be flashing crosswalks, anything else?
Could be, uh, some other things, not just limited to that, but that's what we've been, uh, trying to do, but there might be some other types of pedestrian improvements, whether it's a bump out or some other things, they'd be eligible for it, but, uh, people seem to have liked the flashing crosswalks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else on resolutions? Seeing none?
Move the resolutions.
Second.
Thank you, roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Okay. Guess we'll go right into the public portion here. Does anybody wish to address the council at this time?
Hello again, uh, Charles Pratt of New Brunswick, I have several questions, I'll try to be brief, um, first, uh, it was a little late today because, uh, the Rockwood Johnson Hospital normally used to be able to cut through there from Hamilton to Somerset Street, the Children's Health Institute, Child Health Institute, I believe, and, uh, I went to go cut through, and the doors were all locked, they're normally open, and I thought that was a condition of that building, that building, that there'd be a, maintain a public thoroughfare through the, the building, um, to get to Somerset from Hamilton, vice versa, is that, is that, the ring changed or something?
I, I have no idea, have you used it regularly?
Uh, it's been, it's been a minute, it's been a little while since I've used it, but...
Uh, does anybody know? I, I couldn't tell you that, just, uh, does anybody know?
Yeah, it's supposed to be open.
Yeah.
So, we'll, uh...
Well, we'll get to it.
Thank you very much.
Is it open, will it be open?
Great, um, wanted to ask about, uh, the petitions submitted about fracking, if there's any update on, uh...
I know we all received numerous, uh, we've been inundated with the whole fracking emails and things like that, we've read them, and, uh, you know, still taking them under advisement. Uh, for me, I told, uh, what's the guy's name? Jim Walsh?
Jim, yeah.
Jim Walsh, that, I, I know, I, I personally would like to see other towns, you know, still get involved, you know, take that approach, you know, to see where New Brunswick is and after or something, you know, but I, I don't think we should be the guinea pig here, that's what I was to say, but, uh, so that's about it, about fracking.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to ask for an update on, I know we talked at the last meeting about the emergency management council, I know the city was going to reach out to the state government...
Yes.
...make sure things were in place.
Yes, you got everybody in the city working for you all the time, Charlie, everybody's doing things, just, it was making happen, but, I mean, you were here at the hurricane, right? You saw the way our emergency management system worked, had been pretty darn good, I think, don't you? So, we do have something in place, it's, there's not, you know, you come up here and you make it sound like we don't have nothing, it's just a different name, but we do have it, and we do have information from the state of New Jersey, that number one, our plan has been approved from the state of New Jersey. Robert Walls is a certified emergency management coordinator, mayor, he was appointed by Mayor Cahill, uh, for the position of municipal emergency management coordinator, his term began January 1st, 2010, expires 2031, 2013. The mayor also appoints 18 individuals to the, to this, to this board, and, uh, we are also advised that there are no public minutes to, to, there's no public, the meetings are not open to the public, and the meeting minutes are not maintained. Please note that the Middlesex County OEM suggests that such meetings should not be open to the public as critical infrastructure is often discussed, this is coming right from the Emergency Management OEM, uh, this is from the state of New Jersey, uh, so this, New Brunswick is 100% compliant with its emergency management system, you may not like the name of it, you may not like that you're not invited to the meetings, but that's, but we have it, we have it in place here in New Brunswick, so I don't know why you keep asking about it, but that's, hopefully that should end it.
Well, I, I can explain why I keep asking about it.
Well, you said briefly, so briefly, go ahead.
Certainly, um, like I said, I want to make a personal contribution to the emergency management policies in the city, and at previous meetings, I've been directed to go with that specific council and attend those meetings, so this is news to me that the meetings are closed to the public, and anyone who watches the videos of previous council meetings will know that, uh, in the past, I've been specifically told to attend these meetings if I want to make a contribution, and now I'm pointing out that, that, that's, that's not the case.
Well, okay.
So, I'll certainly, I guess I'll reach out to the, the mayor's office and all of you regarding my ideas and my thoughts on how, how we could approve...
Yes, and you should talk to the mayor about getting appointed to the captain to the board, that was, but that's the way you get to know, if you want to be 18 individual individuals, you can ask Mayor Cahill to give you that appointment.
I certainly will.
Okay.
I wanted to ask, there was a, something that I might read about a lawsuit between the city and Amtrak being resolved, um, can somebody speak to that lawsuit regarding taxes?
Counselor?
Um, I, to be honest with you, Council Vice President, I've heard of it, uh, Mr. Hamilton was handling it, he's not here, um, I don't know that it was resolved, and I, quite frankly, don't have the details on it, if you want...
Could you please bring it up again, Mr. Hamilton, if he's here, will you get some more information about it, unless, uh, somebody else knows anything more about it here?
Oh, please.
Mr. Hamilton's not here tonight, he'll be here for the next meeting.
Fair enough, I'll, I'll ask him. Um, I, I also wanted to speak, um, about, um, a few issues that I, I brought up, via email and telephone calls to the city, um, the first is one, I, I, an issue I raised in the business administrator's office, and then again, I was voted to the water department regarding a persistent leak of water on Lewis Street in front of 44 Lewis Street, which is where there was a huge car fire, um, last month at some point, since then, there's been water coming out of the sidewalk perpetually, and, uh, I think that's, you know...
What's the address?
44 Lewis Street, I want to know if anybody's looked into that.
Mr. Lockland, would you know, do you see the phone call right now, 44 Lewis?
Um, no, not to me directly, unless you emailed me and I suggested we contact the water department, I suppose, still good advice.
Contact me the water department, I think that's where someone would get their email from.
We will look into it.
Thank you kindly, um, wanted to ask for an update on the pedestrian victim who the police wanted help identifying, um, my understanding is that the family's been identified, but I, my email's been under charity on this matter, so, that's correct.
Captain Miller?
Sorry, Captain. Individual has been identified, the family has been brought to hospital, we're not releasing his identity, respecting the family's, uh, request of privacy.
Thank you, and wanted to ask about two, uh, other police matters, um, both of them happened early morning on Labor Day, um, I did email the council members about them, they haven't heard back, one was a, uh, shooting incident on Plum Street, uh, in the early morning hours of, of yesterday, um, is there any update on if anyone was hurt or arrested in relation to that?
It was a disturbance between, um, party, potentially boyfriend or girlfriend, it's a, I'm not going to do anything else in short, so, it wasn't a random incident, it wasn't a drive-by, it was a hostage.
All right, and to be clear, there's no charges filed against anyone of that matter?
Uh, I'm not sure if that, that there's been charges, as...
Understood, and the, the other matter was going on simultaneously, I, there was some, um, incident where there was a lot of blood in the Plaza Square apartments, um, blood on the walls, large volumes of blood, is what I heard on the police scanner, uh, one Richmond Street.
See, I don't have a scanner, so I don't, you don't have a scanner?
It's on, it's on the internet, actually, you can, you can listen to it live for free.
Captain?
An intoxicated individual, which, like, has a...
Thank you. Um, and, uh, just, just to finish up, I wanted a couple of updates on projects that the city's working on, I know there's, uh, the, the, an anniversary of the September 11th attacks coming up, um, Traffic Day, of course, I know the city's been working to memorialize, uh, that tragic day here with a memorial, um, what's data on that?
We appropriated some money for, uh, the, uh, eventual home for a piece of the I-beam that we took from the World Trade Center, um, we're still developing a plan for the best, uh, location of that piece of I-beam, we think that, uh, in front of the library may be a good, uh, location, um, I passed around some key, uh, people whose input would like it, and we're getting a little, some mixed feeling about, uh, exactly how the I-beam would be erected, but we're still working on it, and your, this most recent capital improvement budget that you, uh, recently approved appropriated some money for a permanent, uh, display.
Thank you. Uh, updates on the two park projects that are going on, with Joyce Kilmer Park upgrades and Recreation Park upgrades are slated to be included?
We, uh, awarded a construction contract for the, uh, improvements at the Joyce Kilmer Park, um, and, uh, honestly, at the moment, I don't know exactly what the contractor intends to be, to begin, but we went out the bid and we awarded to the low bidder, um, and with respect to Recreation Park, again, the most recent capital budget appropriated money for the, uh, engineering and architectural work to prepare construction drawings for that project.
Thank you.
And lastly, I know there was a, a property that, uh, thank you for voting against the tax exemption on it, Councilman Eamon, the, uh, Jack Morris property at the Walgreens area, um, I, since it is, you know, tax exempt now, I did want to ask for an update on when some changes are going to happen there, this, this Jersey, Handy.
See, but I, I have no idea. Don't, I know, I, I, hopefully they're going to develop a site soon, that's all I know, but I don't know what it's going to be and when they're going to do it, but, uh, I haven't heard anything.
Michael, uh, thank you for your answers.
Thank you, Charles. Would anybody else like to address the council at this time, please?
Hi, thank you for being here tonight, my name is Lauren Petrie, I live at 124 Bay Amber Street, and I just wanted to invite the council members and residents of New Brunswick to a free film screening of, um, the Gasland Two, it's a documentary, um, if you haven't seen Gasland One, it was an Oscar nominated documentary about the effects of hydro fracking, uh, really depicts how, uh, some of these families that have been, uh, you know, talked into signing a lease to fracture land, um, have been devastated by that health effects, uh, loss of agriculture, um, their environment has been destroyed, uh, you know, their families are getting sick from contamination, um, and this film, Gasland Two, is basically a follow-up, it shows that how years later, um, some of these families that were affected are still being affected, um, really have no way out, um, they've lost a way to sell their home because now it has no value, um, it's a great film, it will answer questions that you have, uh, you know, it explains the federal loopholes, the, uh, lack of regulation that allows this kind of contamination, uh, to take place, it's really, um, it's really eye-opening, um, if you haven't seen Gasland One, I recommend it, um, if you haven't seen Gasland One, you can still come out and see Gasland Two, um, you won't really be missing anything, um, it kind of fills in the gaps as it goes along, uh, the screening will be on Monday, September 16th at 6:00 PM at the New Brunswick Public Library, right over here at Civic 60 Livingston Avenue, um, it's being sponsored by several organizations, Food and Water Watch, uh, Central Jersey Coalition Against Endless War, Rutgers Initiative for Permaculture Education, and others that we, uh, you know, haven't gotten listed on the flyer yet, light refreshments will be served, um, and I also just wanted to make one other mention, um, is that I know that there are some concerns about not being, uh, you know, the, the leader in the pack here in New Jersey on passing the ordinance for hydro fracking, um, but actually to ban it, but as we speak, Highland Park, right next door, is actually having their second reading on an ordinance to ban hydro fracking, um, so it looks like they are going to move forward with that, full force, um, you know, they, they are ready to lead the charge on this, um, so you wouldn't be leading, you would be following, um, and there are, I'm sure, several other communities throughout New Jersey that are doing the same, so, um, you know, thank you, and with that, may I leave you with some flyers?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public?
Good evening.
David, address please.
Thomas McCarthy, and I own a house at 16 Brookside Avenue in New Brunswick. Um, my concern is, uh, we're going on like two years now, 12 Brookside, which is two doors down from me, uh, the city of New Brunswick issued some summons because the, the upper structure of the, uh, house... The city of New Brunswick issued some summonses because the upper structure of the house, it's held up by the two lower porches, and it was structurally unsafe. So the city issued summonses. The homeowners pulled a permit, hired a contractor. He did some temporary framing, and when he did that, he opened up the soffit and the porch under the roofies. From what I understand, he didn't get paid, so he left. And this is going on like two years now. What happened was pigeons and probably four or five other species of birds are up in there. But the main problem is the pigeons. They're on everyone else's property every morning, the bird droppings, they're damaging the roof shingles. When I addressed the building department, I've spoken to Mr. Mahoney, Leo Marmazak, Bill Strong, and also Kevin Jones, has been trying to, you know, see what he can do. The problem that seems to be is that these people seem to have found a loophole here. They pulled another permit with another contractor. Mr. Marmazak told me that it's a three-year permit. There's no work ever been done, no contract ever showed up again. Nothing is being done, like I said, it's going on two years now. From what they've been telling me, I've been getting a lot of different information. I've been told that they can't do anything about it. They can let that permit run out and then get another one for three years, and they can do that for eternity. So the problem will never be solved. I was also told that they can't find them, but I was also told that they are finding them, but it's not fines that they would ever have to come to court for, it's just fines that are building up somewhere that if they ever sell the house, will be ruined. So it just seems like a whole lot of mixed information. But the problem is, I pay over $10,750 a year in property taxes and the house two doors down is dragging down my property value, the quality of my living, and it's damaging my property. I also have tenants that are new to the house and they're coming out of the cars with bird droppings.
You live in a house, sir?
Yes, I do, it's on the rocket, but... So my question is, like, if there's anything that can be done or can they at least get the, everybody on the same page? Because it's not a lack, all those people that I mentioned, I have much respect for, they do a great job, but they don't seem to know how to go about it, you know, they would love to help me, but they don't know how to go about it, is what I've been told, other than...
Well, we will, now we've brought it up with the council meeting, we will have somebody who will be there and make sure that everything you said or didn't say is, we'll find out what's going on, see if we can get the project moving along. So you say how long it's been?
It's going on two years.
Two years?
Yes.
Do you want to see the address again?
The address is 12 Brookside Avenue. And if nothing else, to at least get the birds out of there and cover up those holes, I mean, that would be, you know, greatly appreciated. Because it is, it's a real problem, and I know three other neighbors that have called in about it also, so...
Okay, well, we will definitely have, we definitely look into it. If you'd like to come back for the next council meeting, we can give you some type of, maybe somebody will have some type of report that we can give you.
I appreciate that.
You got it.
All right, thank you very much.
Anybody else who wants to address the council this evening? Seeing none?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.